Welcome to the January 6th, 2015 Board of Selectmen's Meeting. This is our first meeting of 2015. Welcome back and hopefully your holidays were good. You all survived it. I'm going to read the agenda. We are going to go into executive session from 6:00 to 7:00, but let me read the agenda so that the folks at home know what we're doing. At approximately 6:00 o'clock, we're going to enter executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining session or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the fire department contract, and we're going to approve the December 9th, 2014 executive session minutes. At approximately 7:00 p.m., we're going to have citizens input. At approximately 7:05, we'll have a selectman's update, and Bill, maybe you can fill in some blanks there. At approximately 7:15, we're going to hold a public hearing for Rebco Inc., being represented by Bob Baker Jr., and we're going to discuss and take a vote on an earth removal project located at 119 Washington Street. They're building a parking lot up there. At approximately 7:30, we'll have a public hearing for Bar Louie at 232 Patriot Place, represented by Brad Taylor. Discuss and take a vote on the alteration of premise. They're adding two bathrooms to that establishment. At approximately 7:40, we're also going to talk to Bar Louie, and again Brad Taylor. We're going to discuss a change of manager from Rob Hovis to Brad Taylor. At approximately 7:50, we're going to have a discussion on the spring warrant articles for the Springtown Meeting. At approximately 8:00 o'clock, we're going to meet Marsha Ramondo. Is she here? She's our new executive assistant to the town manager. And at 8:05, we'll close with Bill Keegan giving us his town manager update. Okay, so with that, can I have a motion to go into executive session?
Yeah, I move that the Board of Selectmen go into executive session for the following: to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with union personnel, fire department contract, and to approve the December 9th, 2014 executive session minutes and to return to the regular meeting at the conclusion of the executive session.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Roque?
Aye.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we'll be back at approximately 7:00 o'clock. Okay, we're back. It's about 7:17. We've just concluded executive session. We're now back in public session, and we're running a little bit behind schedule. Dave, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Thanks.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's it. We're going to leapfrog to Bill Keegan's town manager update. He has one item that he needs to address.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. It gives me great pleasure to introduce to you the first new officer. I've been here since I've been here. Adam Byrne, just joined the department two weeks ago, right? No?
Yes.
Two weeks ago. And I'd like to introduce him as one of the latest members of the police department. Jay Payne, right?
Yes, sir.
Was his training officer. He's still working with him in the field, a field training officer right now. And I'd just like to offer Adam a few opportunities to say a few words and give you a little bit about his background. Come on up.
I just want to thank everyone for the opportunity. This is the town I grew up in, and it's really an honor to have the job here. So, again, thank you very much. You know, we spoke already.
Yeah.
A little bit about myself. I grew up in town, did the military thing. It's about 17 years in the National Guard, still in. Started off with the military police, transferred over, did a lot of work with the counter-drug program full-time for about eight years, working with some of the federal agencies, doing counter-narcotics work. Ended up going to flight school, becoming a Blackhawk pilot, which is what I still do here in Massachusetts. So, still do that part-time. And that's about it on the military side, and now working here full-time. And it really is an honor, so thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Glad to have you. So, when we buy the helicopter, we know so we can fly it, right?
Absolutely.
All right. Thanks, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And be safe out there, guys.
Good luck.
Okay, the first order of business is that, actually, 7:00 o'clock, we have citizens input. Is there anyone? It's a cold night. Anyone that has anything for citizens input? Larry, any? No? Okay. All right, with that, we'll move right on to our public hearing. At 7:15, we have a public hearing with Rebco, being represented by Bob Baker.
Here.
Bob, okay. And we're going to discuss an earth removal project located at 119 Washington Street. Can I have a motion?
No, I have to read the legal notice.
I'll read that, yeah, thanks.
Legal notice: On Tuesday, January 6th, 2015, at 7:15 p.m., the Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing in the Foxborough High School Media Center, South Street, Foxborough, Mass., on the application of Rebco Inc. for an earth removal permit to be exercised at the corner of Route 1, Washington Street, and Pierce Street, Foxborough, Mass. About 7,500, more or less, cubic yards of material will be removed from the construction site as shown on a topograph, topography plan dated May 31, 2014, with a scale of 1 inch plus 40 feet, as engineered by Bay Colony Group Incorporated, and submitted by Bob Baker Jr. Plans may be viewed at the office of the Board of Selectmen, 40 South Street, Foxborough, Mass.
Thanks. And Bob, can you come up here?
Sure.
Thanks.
Good evening.
So, what's going on up there?
So, we are building a parking lot for the Kraft Group. I'm sure you're familiar with the, I don't know if everybody's familiar with it, but the old, there was an old site there. It'd been wooded forever just before Chase, traveling south on Route 1. It's kind of odd. Everybody doesn't really know where that Pierce Street is. Pierce Street is actually 140, goes under Route 1. The site is in excess. The majority of the material is subsoil and loom that will be removed from the site. There will be some, you know, some excess fill there as well.
Okay.
There's approximately 7,500 yards from my takeoff.
Now, is this primarily just the level of the property?
Yeah, more or less. It's to take it from cut to fill. There's a small detention pond on-site that'll be constructed, and we'll use quite a bit of that excess in that area, but other than that, there's nothing, there's no input needed other than gravel material. It is a gravel parking lot. There's a small area of paved way in and out, but the majority of it is gravel.
Has the material been tested by LSP? Have you done any environmental testing?
I have not done that.
Environmental testing?
They did come in, you know, they, on the building itself, they did that, but I haven't done, I have not hired an LSP unless that's something that Kraft has done or they had done previously. I'm unaware of it.
Just as an explanation, the town of Foxborough has a earth removal permit process, and one of the requirements is that you become, you come before the Board of Selectmen to agree to, I'm explaining this to the audience.
Okay.
No, to you, you know. Just to let everyone know, that's the reason you're here before us. I noticed, when I read the bylaw, it says, "The board shall inspect the site covered by the application." We have not inspected, to my knowledge, we have not inspected the site, but have other --
No, we invited to it.
Right. Has --
You could, well, you could, normally would be the building inspector, I would think, would do a lot of those inspections typically.
No, but here it simply says --
It says the Board's left, really.
Yeah.
Is that prior to this meeting, or is that part of the --
Under 115-3 procedure. It's on the first page, and then it's under C-2. The Board, upon receipt of an application of permit for earth removal, the Board will inspect the site covered by the application.
I think it was intended to be before this meeting, so that we'd have a sense for the scope of the project.
That inspection.
Yeah, it's just that, you know, we're --
These don't happen very often, so.
No, no, no.
Well, I wouldn't even know what we would be looking at. So, I mean, but has someone gone out and inspected, like, somebody from the planning board or something?
The town engineer or the --
I mean, Norman Mulaney has been on-site. He's, you know, he's been active.
From the planning board.
Oh, yeah, I've already, yeah, he's been aware. He was on-board right before we started cutting trees. We met on-site. So.
Okay. And I know the planning board has no, because I called the planning board and they're okay with this.
They actually approved this, this plan, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. How long is this project going to take?
In these weather conditions, it should take us six months, five, six months.
That long, huh?
Right now, yeah. Typically, it'd probably take us three and a half to four months.
Right, to remove 200 --
Oh, oh, to remove the material itself?
Yeah.
Oh, no. A month, maybe.
Okay.
I mean, given the weather conditions and whatnot. Once we get it stockpiled in place, it shouldn't take us long.
And, you know, I was surprised to read that under the bylaw, the operation could go from 7:00 in the morning until 4:00 in the afternoon. Have the neighbors been made aware that your machinery could be going at 7:00 in the morning?
I haven't physically made anybody aware, if that's what you're asking.
Okay, is there some way we could notify the neighbors that just, oh, by the way, you know, just so the police won't be getting a call saying, "What is going on?" I mean, I mean, the 7:00 o'clock is the usual time.
We've had this detail out there already, doing tree cutting operations.
Right, right.
And whatnot.
I ask the question, is there a process to notify the --
To notify the neighbors?
There is. It's, these are the butters.
There were, how many butters are we dealing with? There's no, how many director butters?
These are within 100 feet of the land.
And there's what, how many? Six?
Only four in Foxborough.
Yeah.
Or at least notify the police.
Which really confused.
You know, at least notify the police that they may be getting a call at 7:05.
We could do that.
So, we can, so they'll be able to say it's within the bylaw and, you know.
Six residents.
It would be helpful, I think, if the applicant would send notice to the individual home, the business, your direct butters, which are listed in your application, to that you are going to be commencing, that you are commencing work between these hours as provided for in the permit.
Okay, so you want me to send notice to these butters?
Yeah, just to know as a courtesy to the --
No problem.
Just notify us that that's been done.
Would he do it, or would the applicant do it? Dan Krantz?
Um, hmm.
I guess he's, I guess you're the --
I'm the contractor.
You're the contractor.
Yeah, I'm the agent.
Agent, agent for them.
I am meeting with them in the morning, so I could bring that up.
Yeah, I think you just notify them, that's fine.
Yeah, so, and with the approximate dates, they'll know when to expect it.
Right. What, if I could just ask a question, what's going to happen to the loam? Because the loams can't be removed from the town according to the bylaw.
Well, that, that's another reason I'm here. I mean, I don't, there's nobody in town. I don't know who in town is going to take 8,000 yards of loom.
I thought it was going to Plainville.
It's going to Plainville.
That's what it said in the application.
According to the bylaws, it says you can't remove it.
But I think that they're asking for us to override the bylaw.
My special permit.
I see, okay.
That's, right, that's the purpose. I couldn't buy, I mean, I don't know anybody. I used to use Mr. Marsha, but I, Bill, I don't know if he does, isn't the loom business any longer.
Does --
I think I was the last person that was actually here. Did the YMCA. We ran into a similar situation.
What did you do with that soil?
It was so long. I think, actually, Mr. Marsha took, but it wasn't this type of volume. It was only 1,000 yards or so.
Have you spoken to Roger Hill from the DPW?
No.
Because I know that --
Because they, we do use loam from time to time.
Right.
For various purposes, and they do have an area to store some loom.
They'd be able to provide trucking or anything of that nature for us?
I'm sure, I'm sure they could.
I mean, I'd be willing to.
Yeah. I'll reach out to him as well in the morning.
I just didn't, I mean, that's a --
Just give me some perspective on how big 200 square yards of loom is.
It's a huge quantity.
We wouldn't be able to take it all, I know that for a fact.
That's a big pile.
Yeah. I mean, it's probably, oh, jeez.
20, 30 feet tall?
Yeah, I would say, I'd say bigger than this area in here, probably two stories.
Really?
It's, it's six and a half acres' worth of 18 inches of dirt.
Okay, that's all, huh?
Yeah, it's a big, it's a big volume.
Okay. So, as far as any special permit, you're asking us to waive a section of the bylaw to allow this to be taken out of town?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
But can we wait till you notify or ask the DPW if they would have use for it?
Oh, sure.
Can we do?
We'll have to schedule one over here or not.
Well, can we make it provision, subject to?
Okay, so in other words, if there's no other takers in the town, then any excess could go to Plainville? That seems fair.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, at the time, I'd be more than happy. Issue is, you know, disposing of it, the trucking to dispose of it.
Yeah, well, I just wanted, you know, I'd hate to have it go to Plainville and Roger come up and say, "Oh, mm,"
I'm going to buy some.
You should say, yeah.
Well, that, that's the problem. It's raw loom.
Yeah.
It's not screened loom.
Yeah, it's still --
It's raw. Still needs to be processed.
We still have a screen.
Still needs, oh, okay.
We could still screen it.
Still needs to be processed.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a recycling center down by the DPW where we take, and actually, homeowners can come and get.
Sure, yeah, I'm aware of it. Yeah, 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 yeah.
I don't know, I'm not sure if he needs it or not, but we'll ask. I mean, it's --
That's the problem with it right about now, is that everybody's full, because the economy has been the way it was. Everybody has taken on everything they can, and nobody has room for it any longer.
Right.
So, it's a six-month project, roughly?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Bill, any concerns?
No, I think it's, it's, it's obviously, it's unique because of the nature of what's happening here, but what I'll do is, we just need, we'll just need confirmation that those notices have been sent, and that we'll, and I'll reach out to Roger in the morning.
So, we can do this.
I mean, is it something you want me to send certified, or do you want, I don't want to scare people?
I don't think you --
You know what I mean, just far as?
Confirmation that a lot has been sent.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be sent certified. It's just, it's a, it's more of a courtesy notice. It's not a public hearing notice.
Yeah, okay.
We just don't want the neighbors to be upset about something that they're not expecting. And where it's legal for you to start at 7:00, it'd be nice to give them a heads-up to know what to expect, you know?
Understood.
Dave, you all set?
Yep, all set.
Okay.
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the earth removal permit for Rebco Inc., subject to discussion with the DPW for the disposition of the earth and confirmation that notices were sent to the butters.
Okay, given that there's a public hearing, are there any comments from the public? No? Okay, proceed.
I did.
I'll second it.
Oh, wait, do we have to close the hearing first?
I believe we do.
Yeah, okay, first. I move that we close the hearing for earth removal permit for Rebco Inc.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I have to repeat that motion?
No.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor of the motion as presented?
You have to second it.
I'll second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So, do you want me to reach out? I can reach out to Roger. I'll go by in the morning.
Yeah, why don't you do that? And I'll, and I'll just chuck with him.
Make it easier.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Stay warm.
Stay warm.
Unless I went to Town Hall, I thought the meeting was there.
Hope you got heaters in those machines.
Yeah, it's not very, I think the next couple of days are going to be slow going.
Yeah, that was going to say. All right, take care now. Thank you.
Okay, we're actually catching up on time. At 7:30, we have another public hearing. Bar Louie is here, 232 Patriot Place, being represented by Brad Taylor, and this is a discussion of an alteration of premise, the addition of two bathrooms.
The legal notice: The Board of Selectmen of the town of Foxborough, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 138, will be holding a public hearing on Tuesday, January 6th, 2015, at 7:30 p.m. at the Foxborough High School Media Center, 120 South Street, Foxborough, Mass., on an application to alter the premise of an annual all alcohol beverages restaurant license for BL Restaurant Operations LLC, doing business as Bar Louie Tavern and Grill, 232 One Patriot Place, Foxborough, Mass., manager Bob Hovis. All interested persons are invited to attend.
Good evening.
Could you guys introduce yourselves?
My name is Joe Devlin. I'm an attorney from the Demakis Law Offices in Lynn, Massachusetts, and I represent BL Restaurant Operations LLC, and with me is Brad Taylor, who is the subject of the hearing after this. He's the general manager at the Bar Louie at 232 One Patriot Place.
Yeah, nice to have you.
Thank you. I've often said, I was at school in Wheaton, and I was on the verge, I was at the recruiting station for the Marines with my roommate my freshman year, either, I can't remember what it was, Mansfield or Attaboo or something, and I backed out, and I'm kind of thankful I did, but I wish, maybe if I had, I could say something as cool as, "I'm a part-time Blackhawk helicopter pilot." That was the greatest thing I ever, I go to a ton of these meetings, I was like, I just, and nobody would understand, my wife wouldn't understand if I'm telling her I'm around her home, but, so I apologize, but Bar Louie has added a bathroom to its main interior location. The bathroom before was down a long hallway and not very accessible. This one's right in the middle. It's actually taken away some seats, about 14 tables are lost inside, but it also changes their occupancy, allowed occupancy and seating for the patio, it, the roof deck, excuse me, which increases that, so for next warm weather season, it's obviously not in operation now. It allows them to add more seats as in the plan.
Just on the topic, could you tell us what their seating capacity is right now?
I cannot. Yeah, hopefully Brian can, because the old applications didn't have them.
272 people. It's, it's broken up two different ways in the licenses. It says 272 people inside and 108 people on the patio, and then it says maximum inside capacity is at 308, is what's printed on the license.
Okay.
But --
Okay, so the inside capacity is going to remain at about 300?
Yeah. When the building inspector came in and approved all of the work that had been done as far as the, like, licensing, electrical, and plumbing and all that stuff, and they gave us our new COO, they said 300 people downstairs, and then they would expand the capacity to 300 people on the roof.
Okay, I had a question. Generally, with an alteration of premise, you would come here first, we would approve it, then you'd alter the premise. It seems like you've done it backwards.
You know, it is a difficult, you know, they certainly didn't do anything on purpose. I was kind of running this, because I've talked to Sandra about this before, who I realize has retired, but I sit on a city licensing commission. This is all I do. I've been to over 140 different communities. If someone asked me, just hypothetically, "Hey, I'm going to add a bathroom to our licensed premises, do we need to do anything?" You know, the written guidance from the ABCC is so poor on this subject, this is probably the worst subject there is, that I would probably say, I'd lean towards no, but I'd say, "Hey, look, you know, you might as well do it. Is there any other reason to do it?" And so, you know, the good reason to do it is the change in occupancy and seating on the patio, which they haven't used yet, that that has not been implemented. I would say that's more definite, do it. So, that's, it's, that's, I guess, my first answer is it's a really difficult area here for just a bathroom, because your bathroom is part of your licensed premises. In other words, the ABCC's traditional way of looking at it is, did you change the service areas, the bars? Did you, did you add a service area? Did you add, change the exits or entrances? Did you just change the footprint? That's, I've been doing this for probably 11 years now, and that's always, that's been the ABCC's kind of, you know, those are definite.
But adding this bathroom, well, it's nice to have more bathrooms, there's, it's a trigger.
Yeah.
For more capacity.
But they haven't used that capacity yet, so I, you know, but, but, look, nobody had --
No, I just wanted to say, we are where we are.
Yeah, nobody has went through, nobody went through this mental process either. I think probably what happened is someone in Houston said, "We're adding a bathroom," and as Brad also told me, he said, "We hired somebody to do, you know, get, pull the permits and everything," and, you know, I assume all the rest of us thought that everything was being done properly.
So, how did we arrive here? Did someone say, "Hey, you need to have a public hearing for this?"
I, I think someone talked to Sandra.
Okay, fine.
And Sandra said, "Come in."
It came from, from the building commissioner.
Oh, okay.
Well, he saw, he saw the alteration of premises. He said, "We should just check and make sure this is, this has to be done."
So, the permits have been, you've pulled permits for construction, and Bill Caspari, the inspector, has approved the --
Already signed off on it, yeah. They have a certificate of occupancy for, for this occupancy load now.
The bathroom's built.
Yeah, okay.
And by that, the capacity has increased.
I think he held the occupancy permit until this was resolved.
Oh, has he?
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah, and a brand-new liquor license that I just picked up on December 30th, it still states the original occupancy.
Right.
Because, yes.
They couldn't alter it until this, this was resolved.
Yeah, and they're not operating.
Makes you feel better.
They haven't operated on, and I got involved, so when I got involved, it was, "Hey, Sandra Herman said this," and my answer was, "Sandra knows what she's doing, and, you know, they're the, she's the gatekeeper for her board anyway, do what she says." You know, now, now it's, you know, an acronym, so that's, that's where I came involved.
So, you're going to have to come back again with the increase in occupancy in, to be on the license, because the license, doesn't that usually state the occupancy level in the license?
So, we have to get this approved, then approved by the ABCC. Frankly, it's pretty much, they'll do an inspection of the premises, they'll send an investigator down, but, I mean, the real approval is here, because it affects you[1550.73] the most. The ABCC does send someone down to look at it, then sends final approval to probably you or your officer, Debbie now. And then, and the new license gets issued with the new occupancy and seating.
So until you get the new license is issued, you cannot increase your-
You can still operate under the old license capacity.
Yes, just not with the seating upstairs, and nobody's upstairs on the patio anymore.
At this time of year, anyway, so.
I hope not.
But in the grand scheme of things, it actually, for the most, that they use it, the area they use the most, they've actually lost seats. I mean, Brad was saying last year, the patio didn't open up until May. It could be as early as April, and then in October, it's really just a weekend thing, and then not at all. It just gets too cold up there.
Yeah.
Okay, the two thousand fifteen license has been renewed. And was there an occupancy level on that license?
Yes.
Okay, so that occupancy level-
And that was the same occupancy level prior to them.
So that will remain in force throughout two thousand fifteen?
You can, you can actually alter that license.
Yeah, so when this gets approved-
Come back for an alteration?
No, no, this is the alteration. So if this gets approved, and then gets approved by the ABCC, the ABCC will send back a Form forty-three saying, signed off by then. You sign one section, they sign the other section, and then a new license gets issued with the new occupancy numbers on it.
Yeah, but don't you have to, do they have to come before us again?
Yeah, yeah.
To approve? Or is it just, is it just automatic?
This was an alteration of premise.
At least the purpose of this tonight was to do this.
Change of license. And then, once this is, this is approved, they're going to come back, they've already submitted their application to the ABCC. Once that gets approved, we sign off on it, and then we get the-
But we don't need another hearing to do that.
No, the purpose of this is to explain what they're doing.
Yeah, that petition for change of license at the top is kind of a misnomer. It gives you lots of things to choose from. You put the change of manager on here as well, so.
But you know what? My concern is, is the manager of record right now is Mr. Hovis.
Yes.
Right? I should think the manager would have been aware of the requirements of alteration of premises before, you know, the construction had been done, so that he, you know, he would know he would have to come up. So we're aware, the next agenda item is to make Mr. Taylor the manager of record. I would just like you to, hopefully you'll be more aware of the rules and regulations, and be cognizant of the function of the manager of record, you know, and what you have to do.
Brad says he's calling me next time.
Excuse me?
He's going to call me directly.
Oh, okay.
So a lot of these, I represent a lot of chains, and I represent a lot of single-location places, too. The call will come in from headquarters, and, you know, sometimes they don't feel comfortable calling me directly, and that's, I said, look, I spend a third of my day giving out free advice, so give me a call anytime.
Yeah, but, I mean, you get, you will be getting the rules and regulations for the town of Foxborough, and all that is, you know, is explained, you know. Okay?
I handed him a copy today.
Bill, any comments, questions, hot burn? Any issues with the fact that it's been done backwards, and how that happened?
Well, obviously, you know, it should have been done differently. We, I think we all acknowledge that. And so, as a result, and we would have liked, you know, to be a little more responsive initially as to how that happened. We also knew that you were going through the process, and that's the reason why you're here tonight, you're going through the process of hiring a new manager, so they want to try and handle all at once. So I'm glad that we are proceeding forward tonight, trying to get this cleaned up.
Yeah, okay. Dave, you also?
Yep.
Jenny?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Okay. Given it's a public hearing, is anyone from the public with any questions or comments on this? No, okay. Want to close the hearing?
I move that we close the hearing on the alteration of premises for BL Restaurant Operations doing business as Bar Louie Tavern and Grill.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks.
And a motion? Oh, wait, we're not done yet. I move that the board selectmen approve the request for alteration of premises for BL Restaurant LLC doing business as Bar Louie Tavern and Grill.
Second. All in favor? Thanks, guys. Now the new set of guys can come in. Oh, you're here already, okay. All right. Next, we have a discussion, this is a change of manager to Brad Taylor. Okay, if you want to tee up the conversation and tell us sort of the situation, why there's a reason for a change of manager, and sort of go with your qualifications.
Okay, I'll start off with the reason is, Bar Louie is expanding. We're a growing company. We have recently built a, prior to, once this location was up and running, we, in two thousand and eleven, built a unit in Providence, Rhode Island. And then we opened up a location in, at Fenway Park in Boston, Massachusetts. Since then, we have been growing and hiring additional managers as well. I've been at this location since two thousand and ten, but now it's one of those situations where Rob, our manager of record now, is getting kind of spread thin, and he's, you know, helping out at the Boston location as well, as our location's still kind of, you know, lending advice to the Providence location as well. So it's one of those situations where we want someone who's always in the building. You know, I only work with this location. I'm there five days, six days a week, fifty to sixty hours a week, and it's not one of those situations where hopefully we can avoid what we just went through, where something's happening backwards. Someone's going to always be there with their hand on the pulse of what's going on. You know, I attend all the town meetings for, prior to this, you know, with all of the concerns of alcohol service and that, you know, and even the stuff that we recently went through. And it's just one of those situations where I've been in restaurants for twelve years, and I just want to make sure that there's someone that's always there, that's doing everything that the town wants done properly.
And Bill Corcoran, who the board has met before, I'm not sure how many, is the, now the regional director of the Bar Louies in New England, so that his, he used to be here, you know, solely, too, so now he, you know, he has, he has expanded his responsibilities.
Okay. You presently work at that location?
Yes.
Okay, what's your position there before this?
Before this, I was, I was, I came there in two thousand and ten as just an assistant manager. I was working as assistant service manager, under Bill and Rob were both there.
Okay. And what special skill do you have that your name will go on this license? Because your name has not been on an alcohol license before.
Correct. I'm certified in everything tips, serve safe, crowd control, all those things. I work with Jim Staples and the ID check. We do a bars program where we hire a company that comes in, and they red card, green card, where we work with individuals who are of age twenty-two to thirty years old to do compliance, not necessarily like a compliance check, but just to see that, to make sure, to ensure that all of our bartenders and servers are doing what we require, and that's just card everyone. I'm there, I work with Brandon from Advanced ID Detection. I implemented the fact that we use our scanner all the time. I oversaw our door situation, to where we had ten-door guys, and we're always carding at the door after nine PM, and after every event, even if it's as early as four PM, like the last game was a one PM game. We make it twenty-one and up, which it sometimes costs us some money, where like the last game, we had families that want to come in and dine with, but we don't allow under twenty-one after events, just because we don't want to have any issues with minors being able to obtain alcohol from someone else. So if their friend's twenty-five years old, and they purchased a beer, and they might want to slip it to someone else, we don't want that to happen.
And he is officially the general manager now of the location?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I mean, I was glad to hear that you've been paying attention to the events that were going on in Foxborough regarding alcohol violations, and I think you're getting the sense that this board takes it extremely seriously, and, you know, the penalties are beginning to grow. And, I mean, I just, you know, glad to hear that you're background, at least, you know, you've been in the restaurant industry for quite a while, and I think you get it.
Yeah.
So, okay. Jenny?
No, I'm very pleased to, what you've said, that you're cognizant of the problems that we have had in the past. Just to, I don't know if you're aware of it, we have started, the alcohol establishments have started a, restarted a, what they call Fox Cares, and Dave had attended the initial meeting, so I don't know whether you were aware of that, but they will be having another meeting, and it's, it's just to make all the establishment owners aware of what's going on, rules, regulations, and also, they may, I think they're going to be doing self-compliant checks.
Yeah, they're going to be doing self-compliant checks, and really, it gives them an opportunity to share ideas and interact, and some of the things that happened in the different establishments, because each establishment's a little bit different. So no two instances are like, one establishment might see something a little different than another establishment, and they can share information. I strongly recommend participating in that. I think it's a, it's a great opportunity for the establishments to be responsible servers.
Yeah, I received that notification, it was, I believe, at the Lafayette House.
Yep.
Yeah, and I just, that one was just a bad timing for me over the holidays and stuff like that, when I had time off, but I've already spoken with our district operator, Bill Corcoran, and told him that it's going to be part of my regular things to attend those as well. It's coming, you know, whenever there's a hearing here, I also attend those, but, and he knows, so we're going to set time aside in my schedule to allow for that to happen.
Yeah. Welcome, and best of luck.
One question, when you're not around, who's carrying the torch for your style of management?
I have an assistant general manager, Michael Berry. He's from Boston. He's there most of the time that I'm not there, and if one of us isn't there, James Laird is there. He comes from like twelve years of experience as well, he's from South Carolina, but he's here now.
Okay.
So I, we always have, I actually have a management team of six managers, but one of us three senior managers are always in the building.
And you're there about how many hours a week?
Last week, I was there for seventy-one, but that was just because-
Another short week, yeah.
Yeah. I average five, ten-hour days.
Okay.
So I'm usually there anywhere from fifty to fifty-five, just, you know, sometimes you get stuck, or something happens where it's busy after the holidays, and the kids are on vacation, so it's one of those things that we want to be extra diligent to what's going on, you know, and it's like, I frequently call the police chief and just the town as well, as when we have bad IDs, and I make sure that I get those reported to the police so that those people stop coming, you know, and we've churned in handfuls of them, and stacks of letters of disinvitation to Patriot Place as well, from when we confiscate of, you know, fake, or someone else using someone's legitimate Massachusetts ID that's not them.
Okay. All right. And you have scanners, right?
Yes.
Okay. Bill, Mary Beth, any input?
No, just want to say welcome.
Welcome.
Yeah?
I wouldn't mess with you.
But thanks, that was very well presented, thank you. Any other questions?
No, good luck.
I just have to make a motion. I move that the board selectmen approve the change of manager to Brad Taylor by Bar Louie Tavern and Grill.
My second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Well, welcome to town.
Thank you very much.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
See you guys soon. And I'll afford to see you soon at those meetings.
Okay, miraculously, we're on time. This is great. At seven fifty, the board of selectmen are going to have a discussion on the spring warrant articles. And Bill, we've had a growing list, I just didn't know if there's anything more to add, or if you want to-
We've got a few more items that we want to advise you of, that we, we've got a list of additional items from the, from the planning board, who was, they have four additional articles that they're going to be looking at to add. We've got some-
Water Sewer Commission?
Water Sewer Commission is looking to add a couple items as well. The DPW is going to hold two for-
Policy changes.
Two policy changes.
Yeah.
And I think that's it for now. Those are the ones we have, in addition to the ones I already have on the list.
Debbie gave you in your packet an email from Bill-
Bill Greeter?
Greeter, with four possible warrant articles. And if you want, I can give you a little background on what they are. The first one was to amend the OSRD bylaw. Basically, that's the Open Space Residential. And according to Sharon, she had kind of a foremost authority on conservation and planning come in, his name's Randall Arant, and he made some recommendations, and they're, those recommendations are going to be brought forth as a bylaw.
Okay.
So it was kind of like smart planning and green planning stuff that, he's a lecturer and an author. The second one was, that Bill Greeter suggested was require EIS for applications other than site plan. And basically, there's a requirement for an environmental impact statement for, on applications, and not always do we have teeth to enforce when people don't do that, and I believe that this bylaw will do that.
Okay.
And then the third one was FCOD density, and really, that's for the overlay district addressing the number of units in a residential zone, for example, you know, how many housing units per property. So right now, Sharon has an intern doing, working this week, doing a study, like a, sort of a survey of what we have for residential, and what the density is, you know, if there's one residential unit, or therefore apartment, et cetera, et cetera. So making recommendations around that will be that bylaw. And the fourth one was to amend flood bylaw to include new map references. And basically, that is specifically going to be the Taunton River Basin, Canoe River. There are some new references to be added on a map regarding that.
Do you know if those are federal references or state?
Yeah, I think, I think they're coming in off the new federal maps.
Because I understand the federal maps-
Lots of mistakes.
Are awful.
Yeah.
They're, and the thing is, if you're not in compliance with the, with the federal maps-
They're good.
If you have to get insurance, and then you know, if you're up here and the water's down here, and you know that, you know you're not in a flood plan, you have to prove it to the feds.
You have to come back and prove it.
And this is just a very, very corner piece that, about us, is this Taunton River Basin, we're just a very small portion of it, and they're just looking to clarify that, probably based on the federal regulations.
Okay.
We'll clarify that, though, with the state office.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, that's-
The language on these is forthcoming, I just wanted a placeholder for you. And then, Bill, and I'm out with the water sewer, do you want to-
Right, I did meet with Mike Stanton this day of the day, and we're actually going to go over a couple, like three items that they're working on. I want to just make sure I'm clear on what those actual, those requests are, and then we'll, we'll present those to you probably at the next meeting.
Okay. Bob, did you have something?
If I could interrupt that?
Yeah.
We need a new member on the Conservation Commission.
It's actually on your action items.
That's in the action.
Action item. Could we squeeze that in before we get into this big discussion on the warrant articles?
Well, I don't think we're going to do a lot of discussion.
I think that's the end of the warrant article, we just want to see what the, what the updates were going to be.
We're just providing, we're just giving a limited update on that.
All right.
Okay.
And DPW asked us to hold two warrant articles for possible rule policy kind of changes. Roger didn't elaborate, we were in a two-hour budget meeting, but he asked-
Yeah, those are the, the regulations, I was going over that last night. Yeah. They're almost, they, I think they're about done, they just want one more review, I think, for the attorney. Their attorney's been doing a great job, they have special counsel for it, and they're-
Steve?
Steve?
Yeah, he's very good.
Okay. Mary Beth, we've all, you finalized the assignments?
I have from last time, I have the, the section two, paragraph three revised bylaw, was, you were assigned to that?
Mm-hmm.
And I believe that's the one that is posting of the town warrant. It cost us like seven thousand dollars to post the entire warrant in the newspaper this year, so that's to look at, maybe options of doing it, an abbreviated article that points to our website, or something like that.
We'd like to support the reporter, so.
We think Donald will do it.
Well, the big thing was the bylaw, the billboard bylaw, warrant article, that was, you know, way thick.
Yeah.
That was the thing that put everybody over the edge.
Put it over the edge, that's all right, yeah. But I had you assigned to that one, John.
Yep.
And the stabilization fund for southeastern regional, I don't think we had anybody assigned to that one. The additional-
Randy can work with you on that, because he's very familiar with what's going on with that situation.
Steve Woden was beheading that from the school committee, I think.
Was he?
Okay. Because, yeah, and then, Jenny, had you assigned to the additional liquor license?
Yeah, and I'm meeting with the, I'm on the agenda for the planning board on Thursday to get the-
Okay. John, you also-
I have a personal volunteer.
We're meeting tomorrow night, if you're interested, at five thirty.
I will clear my schedule.
Okay, we have Leo Peliquin coming labor counsel to talk to us about any inconsistencies between the bylaw and the Town Manager Act that didn't get cleared up last time, so it'll be an interesting meeting.
Where's that going to be?
At Town Hall, at the, at the big table.
I will be there, Bob, I might be joining you later on, I would feel a bit late to that.
And then I had Jim for the planning board articles.
Uh-huh.
And Lorraine for the signed bylaw. And then myself and the chief are working on the constable bylaw change. We met today, we practically have it like ninety percent written. We're in good shape with that, and we'll be able to share that with you soon. And then, Jenny, I think you're the, you're going to work on the water sewer.
Yeah, I'll do that, yeah.
So Chairman, just to, Bob, do you anticipate any articles?
Yes, I think just one.
Just one, okay.
Okay.
We'll just put a note here, because we're trying to get ahead of that process.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, Paul.
Great, thank you.
Can you hang in there one? We'll take you first in the, in the action items, okay?
Okay, do you, this shouldn't take long, right? Because it's just, if you want to just take care of him, I'm-
Fine, if you wanted, do you have the action items? We can just take Bob-
We can go back to it, so Bob doesn't have to wait.
Yeah, due to the retirement of Alan Kretis. He stepped down from the Conservation Commission, so they need to appoint a replacement. And what was the term ending? I didn't get that date.
Yeah, I have that somewhere. I left it at home. Seventeen, I'd say.
Two thousand seventeen, okay. Just so I can put it in the motion. Yeah. So there were, there were four citizens who had put in a request to be considered for that, and apparently they've been, you met and interviewed them, and you came up with one recommendation, but all four applications were included in the board of selectmen packet.
Correct.
So, did you want to talk to-
The commission made a recommendation, and you, and that's also in your packet, to appoint Michael Kelleher to the position, but I understand you wanted to, I don't know, if you want to know anything about the other ones, or?
Well, I'm glad that you got four applicants, but I think for, you know, you're recommending Mr. Kelleher, so I think we'll, we'll press on with that.
Okay. Good. Point him, we can get him started, sworn in, and we've got a big meeting next Monday night.
Okay. So you also, Dave, you also?
Yeah, mostly.
So I move that the board selectmen approve the applicant, the appointment of Michael So I moved at the Board of Selectmen, approved the applicant, the appointment of Michael Kelleher to the Conservation Commission, per recommendation of the Conservation Commission, and thank him for his service. And this term will be expiring in two thousand seventeen.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Can I just ask you a question?
Yes.
We had sent around a message asking from boards and commissions if they wanted to weigh in on our finalists for the town council applicants. I sent it through Jane, so if you have any either interview questions or comments on the three finalists, yeah, we'd love to have those by our, the meeting on the twenty seventh.
All right, thank you, I'll get them in.
Thanks.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda, given the retirement of Sandra Herman at the end of the year, we're going to have a bit of a changing of the guard here, and Bill, would you like to introduce our new executive assistant?
Sure, I'd be glad to. First of all, let me just say, give it a little bit of a background. We, we started, we initiated a process when Sandra notified us, us, a couple of months ago, that she was planning her retirement, which actually took effect on January second of this, of this current year. That we needed to initiate a process, which we did. We did a worldwide search, ended up with over three hundred and five applicants, if I'm not mistaken. Mary Beth whittled that group down to about sixteen highly qualified candidates, which we then proceeded to do telephone interviews with. We also did face-to-face interviews, that, that sixteen was in addition to three internal candidates that we looked at. We then whittled that group down to about eight semifinalists, which included, actually, I should say, it was actually, we, we interviewed all of the internal candidates in addition to the eight semifinalists. At that point, we, we then reduced that group down to four finalists, which included Marsha and three other outside candidates. We then had another interview process, which included myself, Mary Beth, Randy Scollins, and, who was the other one?
Lorraine.
Lorraine, I'm sorry, I forgot that, I forgot Lorraine. Marion Brew, the chairman of, chairman of the Board of Selectmen. And at the end of the day, the candidate you have before you tonight is Marsha Mondo, who is, was, is currently still the secretary to the Board of Health, is in transition to work in our office over the, and will be starting, I believe, the week of the twenty sixth, if I'm not mistaken, correct? And so we're also now looking for a new person for the Board of Health as a result of that. But Marsha is a highly qualified candidate, and we're very, very excited about having her join our team. We, you know, it's interesting, sometimes when you do a worldwide search like we did, that you, that you're able to come back to your own backyard, and what's interesting is that Marsha joined the town of Foxborough just in, just nine months ago, in working for the Board of Health. But in, in my opinion, I think she was, she, she was, she, she worked in a position which I think was actually overqualified for her skill set, because she actually has some tremendous, tremendous experience. First of all, she's, she has a master's in public administration from Suffolk University. She says she has a bachelor of arts degree, that she graduated con lottie from, in healthcare administration from Stonehill College. Currently is the administrative secretary to the Board of Health, and, and was the faculty appointments manager for the Tufts University School of Medicine in Boston for four years prior to joining the, the team here in, in Foxborough. Prior to that, she had a very interesting twelve years of service, working for the Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution in, down in, down in Falmouth, Woods Hole, Falmouth, Massachusetts, where she was the graduate admissions and student affairs officer for that program. So very interesting background and a very talented background, and a gal which we're very, very pleased to have, having joined our team as our new administrative, executive assistant to the board and to our office. I'll just give Marsha an opportunity to say a few words, but I, I would like to have, I want you to come on up. And, but I would like to ask, Mary Beth, if she has any further comments about the process, because this is a process that she designed, and I give her credit for that, because it was her first official recruitment process for the town. And then she's working on quite a few more in addition to that, I'll just give her a few, opportunity to say a few words as well.
I think, you know, it was a great experience, it speaks really well for the town of Foxborough, that we received three hundred and three applicants for this position. I think it says a lot for the incumbent Sandra, who is a well-respected position, that, you know, internal candidates as well as external sought it out. We had some super overqualified candidates, we had at least twenty-five attorneys applied for the job. What we ended up with, you know, we, we did, we probably got it down to thirty, Bill and I screening resumes, and then down to the sixteen that we phone interviewed, and then later we brought in a subject, one of our colleagues from the town of Shrewsbury, who is the assistant town manager, I mean, in South Borough. And she came in and did the interviews with us, and we, and we whittled it down to four. With the help of Lorraine and Randy, we came to, to Marsha, but it was a really, really highly qualified group of people. You know, the final four, anyone could have done, done the job, and we were thrilled that Marsha rose to the top of that group. And like, really looking forward to our new team.
So, Marsha, yours.
Thank you, yeah. No, thank you, I'm really excited, I'm, I'm flattered by this offer and appointment. I'm very excited to start. My past year in the, in the town of Foxborough has been great, so I think this is going to be some more exciting opportunities coming up.
Big shoes to fill, right?
Yes, definitely, yeah, yeah, it's all finally sinking in, so, but it, it was quite a process, and it's, it's, it really is flattering and humbling, so.
Now, you're going to start the end of the month?
Officially, the twenty sixth.
Twenty sixth.
Yeah, over the next couple of weeks, because, I mean, I'm just down the hall, and they need to fill my position as well within the health department. So we're going to, I'll work with Debbie, and over the next couple of weeks, kind of transition, do both jobs a little bit, so.
She actually did work with Sandra a little bit before she left, and Sandra will certainly be available to us if necessary. But I think that the, it's interesting, by the way, that the last four secretaries, three secretaries have all come from the Board of Health, actually four now, because Sandra actually came from the Board of Health. Debbie came from the Board of Health. And, oh, so it's three, so, and, and Marsha, so it's, it's three.
It's a good training ground.
It's a good training ground, for some reason, we keep getting them out of that department. So they're not really, they still like us, which is a good thing. But I will tell you that, you know, we didn't know that we're going to end up with this level of talent pool, but it's great to be able to, always promote from within when you can do that. I mean, that's always, that always speaks well of the organization, we can do that. But secondarily, it's great to be able to find good talent locally.
Well, we're really looking forward to getting to know you and you getting to know us, and did Bill warn you about our, you know, fifty phone calls a day?
Only after I said yes. Great.
Well, thanks for coming up.
All right.
Thank you very much, graduation.
We're actually missing two members tonight, in case you know, but you did meet, you already did meet.
Slowly.
Yeah, and you actually did meet, you met Jim as well, because Jim was actually at the, at the. That was here Friday at the, at Sandra's get together, so, so he was able to at least talk to you a little bit, so, which was great.
So, good, small doses, right?
There you go, all right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark, thanks for coming up, thank you.
And Jim, if we, I mean, John, if we can do a plug for, our position is posted on the website right now.
Plug away.
So if anyone's interested in the Board of Health position, you can email jobs@town.foxborough.us or look on our website, there's a description there, it's also advertised on a Board of Health website, as well as the Mass Municipal website.
I think the audience is probably pretty big tonight, given the weather and the coldness, otherwise we'd have a packed house. Larry's the only stealthy guy that came on.
So if you're interested in finding out more about the position, visit our website.
Dynamite, great, thanks.
Yeah, and we had a nice coffee for Sandra on Friday, quite a few people came up to say goodbye.
That was great.
It was, it was very nice.
Very nice.
Yeah.
So, we'll miss Sandra very much.
Yeah, absolutely true, and, so, and I want to thank Debbie for having coordinated that, so she did a nice job of that, did a great job of that, so thank you, Deb, for doing that. These are a couple of things, if, you know, I'm going to write into my report, or?
Yeah, if you could.
Okay. The, a couple of things are, of course, very important issues that, that we're dealing with. First and foremost, the, we have been working, as you know, with the, with the, with the old firehouse in, in the funeral home, which we did not receive any, any actual bids on that property. So we're going to start that discussion again, probably by next week, we'll get going into that discussion as to what our options are. I don't believe we've met since the last time those bids came in, because I wanted to make sure that the, the board was fully aware of that. But we, disappointed, of course, that we didn't get any bids, but we had quite a bit of interest in it. But I think that perhaps the timing wasn't right for some folks in terms of projects they were working on. They, they expressed interest, but they had other things that they were working on, so they couldn't make it work. So we'll, we'll see, we'll take a couple of new tactics and see what we can do, try to make it work.
Do you think you could contact those people who had expressed interest, and then interview them and find out why they didn't put a bid in?
Yeah, I think, that's actually one of the thoughts that I had, was to do just that, because we want to know what, what the, what was it that held them back? In, you know, from a, from a purely, you know, informal way, we actually found out that some were working on other projects, and they just, they were committed in other areas, they just couldn't make it work financially and to meet that timeline that we had set up, so. And, and actually, it is a lot of work to put together a proposal of that nature, with no guarantee that they'll actually get it. So, so I think that in and of itself is a challenge sometimes. It works in some environments, in other environments, it simply doesn't work. So right now, there's, there's opportunities for people to build things in other areas, so it's just a case where it just didn't, didn't work timing wise, so.
Yeah, I think, I think the R F P process can be cumbersome, and a lot of people are going to shy away from that. Where if it was just a, a straight real estate deal, you'd get a lot, a lot more interest.
I, I believe that's true, I think we're going to end up probably going in that direction, getting one out of bid, or let people provide sealed bids for the property, see where it goes. The other major issue that, of course, we're dealing with is the fact that the, is the rail line issue, the, the local rail line service that is being proposed for, for here in Foxborough, from the Foxborough Line through, from Patriot Place to, through Walpole into Boston, to the Fairmont Line. And a couple of things have happened during the course of the past few days. One was that we did receive several comments back from, from the D O T, from David Moller, who we asked, who was at the public hearings, both in, in Foxborough and in Walpole. And as promised, he did deliver those responses, which, so I give him credit for doing that and being responsive as he, as he said he would be. However, just a matter of days later, we learned that the, that the M O A had been signed, the Member of Understanding, a Member, a Member of Agreement, that, that the, dealing with the D O T, Mass, the M B T A, and, and the, and the Foxborough Realty Association, which is a fetter of land owned by, by the Kraft Group. So that meant that that, there is, there is an agreement in place at this moment in time, and you think what responsibilities will be for each of those parties with respect to that property and how that property will be handled. It still remains to be seen whether or not that will be funded, because it talks about improvements to tracks, et cetera, and whether or not that, that still requires a significant contribution from the state to make that happen. And we're talking in millions of dollars in order to make that happen, so there was, that's, just because the agreement's in place, as I read the agreement, doesn't mean it actually could still go forward at this point. I thought the timing of, of the agreement was, was interesting, in the sense, in the sense that it happened rather, rather quickly. Why, I, it's rare that I've ever seen anything move that quickly in terms of the, the state process, because the process typically takes years to move things along pretty quickly, but I think there was clearly an effort to try and get this done. And I'm going to leave it to speculation as to where, where that push was coming from. But having said that, the agreement is, is, is available, it was made available to the press, the press already has a copy of that. They, David Moller actually presented, presented that to me, as well as he did to the town of Walpole, so they have the agreement as well. These, the representative, the state senator, both have copies of the agreement as well. So the question remains now for the board as to what actions, if any, you want to take from this point forward relative to that. I did get some feedback, I know that Selectman DeVillas was not here this evening, but he did send, send along some thoughts to me that he thought, that he would hope that would be part of the conversation tonight. That he would like to at least see that, that the board engaged special counsel to at least look at all the pieces of this agreement to make sure that it was done, that, that the town does in fact have no authority to be involved in any of this process, which, based on what we've received from the state, that does not indicate that we do. The second piece is to make sure that, is whether there are any permitting processes that we've, that have been missed along the way, that are, are still need to be done. If that, if they are, we need to make sure that those processes are clear as to how the process will move forward from here, in terms of permits. So he, he asked that, that those considerations be made, as well as the, the federal authority as well, because the Surface Transportation Board has to weigh in on this process as well, to make sure that all those, those Ts have been crossed and every dot has been eyed, has been, has been dotted, rather. So that's where we're at at this point, we, we have the agreement. The, the town of Walpole is, is proceeding in its own fashion in that regard. I've not heard directly from Senator Timmeltie or from Representative Barrows directly, though I know that, that we do have time set aside to where we will talk. I have heard from Senator, Senator Timmeltie's office, his aide actually reached out to me as well, to make sure we were aware of this agreement. So that's where it stands at this point in time, I just wanted to make everybody aware.
One of the concerns I have is the, in the memorandum agreement, it mentioned, and they had mentioned before at the presentation, about carving out five acres of land in that property to use as a maintenance facility. A layover slash maintenance facility. And I'm concerned that, that actually backs up to North Street.
Right.
And backs up to residential area in North Street, and I'm just concerned about the zoning, if that is indeed allowed. You know, if, if that, if the zoning is a consideration, because, I mean, that's pretty much a result, half of it, one side's residential, it would be backing up to houses, and the other side, it's foul land.
One thing I do know, because I actually asked that question in the initial meeting I had when I was in Boston back in October, that if the, if the M B T A controls that land, that they're exempt from zoning. So they wouldn't, so that zoning wouldn't apply to them in that instance if they wanted to, if they decided to build in that.
So just because they control it through a.
Well, they would actually, they would actually own it, based upon the way the agreement is written, as I read it, they would actually have ownership of that land. The land would be transferred to their, to them, so they would actually own that land.
So with no consideration for the area that it's in, being near a residential, I mean.
Those are the questions that have to be raised, I mean, I think that if, if that's, and that, that piece is not imminent at this point, as I read that agreement. I read it last night.
Right.
As much as I could understand it and get through it, that, that piece is not imminent, that's, that's, there's a five-year window for that to be acted on.
Yeah.
And so, and if that doesn't happen, then I might understand that the land reverts back to the control of the, of Foxborough Realty.
Well, one would tend to think that if they were rushing this through before the end of the year, then they're certainly going to do something with it before the five years is up. And, and my concern is, where was the input from the town of Foxborough? There wasn't really, we asked questions.
Yeah, I think, I think going back to Jim's point is that we look at using special counsel, given that we're not a full board tonight, I think we should bring that up at the next meeting, I think it's a good idea. Again, for Ginny's point, there's a lot of areas where the interests of the residents of Foxborough will be impacted. So I think we need to look out for that.
And there's questions about M E P A filings, et cetera, whether or not those, those things, those do actually apply, given the nature of the, of the work that's, that could potentially be done, especially with regard to the, to the holdover yard that's being proposed, that's been discussed.
M E P A is the Massachusetts version of the E P A, right?
Yes, right, the Massachusetts Viable, Viable Multiple Attention Detection Act, is what it's called.
Let's do that next time, it's brewing. Bill, one other thing, could you give us a status update on the proposed forty B up on Fisher Street?
Yes, I actually had that as, as another item for you for consideration tonight, is that the, at this point in time, we did also receive a, an application for a, the town has received notification that a forty B process has, has been initiated. And that, what that, what that means is that a request has to be made to the state first in order to determine if, if there is a, that the process has been designated for that type of development. The actual application to the town has not occurred as of yet, all we have been notified is that the actual filing with the state has occurred. So I actually have the, the documents, the document in my office, anybody wants to look at, they're free to do so. But having said that, there is, the actual permit itself, we do not expect to hear from them until sometime in March. So however, there is a, a site view which is expected to occur, we believe, the middle part of this month. And if that happens, Sharon Wasson will keep me informed of that. Sharon Wasson is, is the staff liaison to this type of process, and so she's, and she's fully aware of how the whole thing works.
What's the, what's the purpose of a site view, what does the town get out of that?
Well, it's, it's, first, identify any kind of concerns you might have during the, during the review process, so that everybody's aware of what the, how this, how this, this project will actually sit, what types of environmental concerns might be, might prop up, or any kind of neighboring concerns to, to neighbors, to buffering, and things of that nature.
Yeah, but, but that was another question, a site visit won't do that for the neighbors, is there a process by which the, the neighborhood can participate with questions and concerns?
That, that part I don't know, I think that there'll be, there'll be hearings of, of the, during the process, where, where the public will be able to weigh in.
Okay.
But as far as the actual site visit, that piece, I'm not a hundred percent sure of.
I mean, did they solicit that opinion before the application?
Not so aware of.
Application's already been, already been submitted.
No, you said it hasn't.
No, the, the.
To the state.
The state, yeah, but, but the thing is, how do they engage the, you know, the butters and the residents of that neighborhood before the application is finalized and then submitted to us?
Once the state approves the application for forty B status, and they have to submit a comprehensive. a comprehensive permit application to the town.
Right.
And that's when the hearings.
Through the planning board.
That's when the whole process begins.
So, that is, that's the process, just so everyone listening will know that there will be a process.
And then the planning board will be conducting hearings, and then they will take the input of the.
The zoning board of appeals, they're the agency.
Okay.
For, for this.
But the planning board also has some input.
Planning board has, weighs in on it, there's no question about it, but they, but the, but the zoning board of appeal is, is the permitting agency for this type of application.
Yeah, and they'll be notifying the abutters for hearings and stuff like that, so there'll be plenty of information for people who are concerned, who want their voice heard.
Okay.
But for, but for anybody who's listening tonight, and for, of course, the press, is that the actual application has not been yet submitted to the town, and that, again, we don't expect to see that till sometime possibly in March.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm still wondering what a, what a walk-around the property's really going to do.
I think it's just to familiarize all the local, the local agencies as to what the issues might be.
Okay.
Familiarize with it, but I've never seen the property myself, so I may in fact, in fact, go myself just to see it.
Okay. Any questions, Dave, on that?
Nope.
Okay. Thanks, Bill.
Okay, you're welcome, and then I just have one item for you on your action items, so if you want to.
Yeah, we're going to get into action items straight away here, Ginny, if you want to tee it up.
Yeah.
Remember that you have this one to fill in.
Great, yeah, okay. The first one is an application for a road race on Saturday, October 24th, from the Foxborough Regional Chatter School, this will be their 50th annual road race, and they've already, there's, they got the OKs for Public Safety and DPW, and they've gotten those approvals. So, I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the application for the 5th Annual 5K slash 10K Road Race in WAC for Saturday, October 24th, 2015, as submitted by the Foxborough Regional Chatter School.
Second, is that using the same route that they've used in the past?
It's the same route they used last year.
Okay.
I don't know if, previous to that, it had been different, but they said it was the same as done in 2014.
Okay. Any questions?
Still second. That's it, no more questions. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The next is an approval, they're asking for an approval for, accepting a donation, this is the Council on Aging. I called Vicki Lowop about this, and it's a donation of $500 from a local business, the local business is Technical Support International Incorporated, so I asked her, I said, what's the, what are you going to use the donation for, and she said, no, it was just general use, it was the end of the year, and I guess this company went around and made donations to different, different groups around town.
Really?
It's a good write-off, I suppose, but anyway, so, so what they're going to be doing is, they dropped it off to the office, and they're just going to use it for general use, for the Council on Aging. So, I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the acceptance of a $500 donation from Technical Support International Incorporated to the Council on Aging for general use, and I thank the company for its generosity.
And that would be Technical Support International, thank you very much.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and, oh, the third one was the appointment, which we've already done, the Conservation, yeah, that, but we already did the Conservation appointment, and then this next one is, came in this afternoon, I guess, it's a request from One Day All Alcoholic Liquor License for the New England, New England Patriots Charitable Foundation for two private hospitality functions to be held at the Dana Fava Field House on Patriot Game Days, respective dates are included on the attachment to the application. Please note that this second event is contingent upon the Patriots advancing to the AFC Championship game, the events are consistent with what we have historically executed, and both Police Chief O'Leary and Fire Chief Hadfield have been and will remain integral, integral to the planning process. The reason the Field House has to apply for one-day all alcohol licenses is because they had given up their annual license for, I forget which.
Switfield.
Was it Switfield?
Switfield.
That's right, and so because of that, they have to apply for one-day all alcohol, and that's what we'll be approving tonight, if so.
Motion away.
Okay, so, okay, so I.
But the dates we don't know, right?
Yeah, well, one of the.
Yeah, they do, they do indicate both dates.
Okay.
Which is, one is the.
The 10th?
The 10th, and the other one is the.
The 18th.
Is the 18th.
Okay, and we have the times, okay.
Yeah, so can I just make a general, I move that we, the Board of Selectmen approve two one-day all alcoholic liquor licenses for the New England Patriots Charitable Foundation for, one for January 10th, 2015, and one for January 18th, 2015.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Go Pats.
I have one last, I have one last item.
I just want to say, good luck to the Patriots.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hope they, hope they play well this weekend.
Hope they play a full schedule.
Yeah.
Hey, one item, people probably don't realize this, and occasionally we dive into information packages, but there was one item in the information package this week which was kind of unique, did you see this?
Yeah.
And I'll put my glasses on, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but this was a letter sent to the Board of Selectmen by Abraham Jones, and I'm assuming he's a student in Foxborough, and I'm not sure if this was a, a school assignment or not, but he wanted to bring to our attention that he did some research and found that there's a town in North Dakota called New England, and he recommends that everybody Google New England, North Dakota, just to learn about a, a, a bunch of wayward New Englanders that found the way to North Dakota and decided to name it after their, their region, so look up New England, North Dakota, and Abraham Jones, thank you very much for sending this letter to the Board of Selectmen, it's refreshing to get these. With that, are we done?
I think so.
I think so.
Let's adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good night, everyone, and thanks for watching.